Playway Meeting Number 61 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Good and gracious God, as we near the holiday season, which includes celebrations from many faith traditions, may it be a time to acknowledge your divine presence and work in our lives. May these events serve to draw us closer as one family within your domain and help us to respond better to the needs of one another, especially the less fortunate. May it indeed be a season of giving. We pray for those who experience the loss of a loved one during this time and especially for those who have died by violent means. May your Spirit of compassion be a source of healing and hope that will shore up the floodgates of grief and overcome the walls of vengeance. We pray for those who serve the public and place themselves in harm's way, especially police officers, firefighters, and those who served in the armed forces. May they respectfully discharge their duties and receive your protection. And may this meeting begin with your inspiration and be sustained by your wisdom so that the common good is promoted. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Chair Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of Council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Gunther. I'd like to have a moment of silence for OC Boyd. Mr. Boyd was the U.S. Army Veteran of World War II and he assisted the prestigious Tuskegee Airmen as their quartermaster. He was awarded a Purple Heart and a Bronze Star in 1945. He went on later to be proprietor of Boyd's Ashland Oil located in the Linden area and retired after 34 years from the Ohio Dayton Malibu Iron Company. Was married to his wife for 68 years and just made a tremendous contribution to our city and someone which we certainly deeply admire and honor and respect. And if we'll have a moment of silence for him. That is all that I have.
Councilmember Klein. President Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson. Any announcements from our elected officials? City Auditor? Just wanted to make sure I hadn't left out the courts. Are there any requests by members of Council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Now, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk?
So moved.
Chair Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Development Committee Ordinance 2593-2012. Technology Committee Ordinance 1844-2012. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance 2049-2232-2405-2418-2430-2475-2481-2491-2509-2012. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance 2323-2012.
The following ordinances appear on our consent agenda, our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 208, 209, and 210 X-2012. Finance Committee Ordinance is 2406-2410-2453-2472-2476-2477-2520-2012. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2429-2435-2454-2591-2012. Development Committee Ordinance is 2525-2556-2562-2608-2615-2624-2639-2663-2012. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2514-2517-2590-2592-2596-2601-2688-2012. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2460-2461-2544-2545-2012. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is 2273-2333-2420-2428-2507-2524-2533-2542-2012. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 2200-2231-2380-2433-2442-2444-2527-2531-2552-2012. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2288-2356-2372-2385-2404-2407-2431-2457-2012. Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered 80191, 192, 193, 194, 195, 196, 197, 198, 200, 201, 202, 203-2012.
May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Mills. Yes, with the exception of 2410-2012, ordinance 2435-2012, 2356-2012, on which I am abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Gunther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. I need to apologize. I got rolling right into our agenda and forgot about welcoming our friends from the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission. And as everyone knows, for the last several months we've been having leaders from our area commissions from around the city come to City Council to update the community some of the projects and initiatives taking place all over Columbus. So tonight, we have the Chair of the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission, Becky Oberstarr. And she's here and I understand that tonight's presentation will be a little different than the ones we've had most recently and wanted to really highlight some of the great work that's been taking place in the Fifth by Northwest area. And so, Madam Chair, the floor is yours and look forward to hearing from you and your team about some of the exciting things in the Fifth by Northwest area. Please feel free to come forward to the podium.
(Audio from the floor.) President Gunther, members of Columbus City Council, and members of the city of Columbus at large, I'm proud to present to you some of the things that the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission has achieved over the years. We have one of the highest rates of economic development and zoning, as you may be aware of. We've endeavored to create a walkable, green-focused neighborhood. And some of the things that we've done to create this is neighborhood signage, we've created a community garden, we were instrumental in starting curbside recycling, we were just awarded an Urban Infrastructure Recovery Fund for sidewalks, we have bike lanes. One of the first things we put in place when we formed the area commission was an urban commercial overlay, which included green space in our vision. And we are undertaking a tree planting exercise currently to plant trees along West Fifth Avenue. Today, I want to present to you kind of the next steps, our vision of what the neighborhood can become. As President Gunther said, it's a little bit different. We're taking, we're looking at the future. We have a strong foundation. We've been working with the Ohio State University's City and Regional Planning Studio to look at our approach to the neighborhood, emphasizing environmental awareness and looking at what the residents themselves wanted for the neighborhood. The Ohio State University students that are here with me today have done a statistical analysis with surveys of the neighborhood to find out what residents were looking for and to create a vision of the traffic, of the green space, of the architecture. And I think we have a really unique opportunity with Grammy Yard on our boundaries to keep that economic development moving forward. So I hope that you will enjoy the presentation today from the Ohio State University. They've worked the entire semester on this presentation. This is part of their class project. And with that, I will introduce John Gardaki, who's going to be presenting a PowerPoint about their findings of the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission.
Thank you to President Gunther and Councilmembers. My name is John Gardaki and I'm representing OSU. Becky has asked us to do a neighborhood plan for the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission. Their last plan was approved in 2009. So they have new growth in the neighborhood as well as an identity problem that they are currently facing. So this is just a snippet of our neighborhood plan that we put together. We also have a final report that is roughly 55 pages that goes into detail about our implementation for the Fifth by Northwest area. So we have four phases of this report. Our first phase was an analysis of the area. We looked at the history, which included the Sellsville Circus, Winter Quarters. The Sellsville Circus is now the Ringling Brothers. So it is part of the area that is gone. There is only one remaining house standing that was part of it. So it's something that the area could implement into park design, per se. Next, we looked at the physical inventory. So this area is highly commercial corridor-heavy as well as multifamily housing instead of single-family housing. And there's a couple of industries as well. Next, we took a look at the census data from the Fact Finder and we found that the average age is between 20 and 35. So we're looking at younger urban professionals that prefer more urban living and walkability in this area. We also found that there was a high education level in the area, professional level, that's bachelor's degree and up. So we're looking at people with higher incomes that want to spend more money in the local communities. Next, we surveyed the area. We surveyed business members, visitors, and residents of the area and we found that parking, walkability, and community were some of the most important trends that they wanted fixed in their area. The next phase we looked at is the goals, which was part of Phase One. So we took the planning commission members and we gave them votes for a list of about 12 goals that we came up with from our surveys. And they were allowed to vote on which ones they thought were the highest ranking that needed the most attention in their neighborhood. So we came up with eight goals. Three of them were high priority, walkability, creating an identity for the area, and preserving commercial activity. So we focused on those three goals the most in our further phases. The other goals are promote sustainability, reflect the history, yuppies, which is young urban professionals, improve aesthetics, and reduce the traffic. In Phase Two, we looked at design concepts, which were abstract concepts that the students made. We came up with 15 and got it down to three that most represented the eight goals we found in the analysis. So the top concept here is our buffer zone, which buffers conflicting uses, the parking, traffic, residential and commercial, so that pedestrians and traffic can flow safely in the area. The next one down is the shopping district, which includes gateways at the end to attract visitors and residents into the area. And they would go down major corridors. In this area, there are Fifth, Third, and King. And they would shop along these corridors and go into what we will be calling an urban center. Our third design is the Roman Plaza, which evokes a public gathering place, which is needed to bring the community together, not only for dogs, for the young urban professionals and kids in this area. Phase Three is our design options, which take part of our goals, our eight goals. So our first goal we looked at, this is, we're only doing one goal for the time allotted here. So we are looking at walkability here. So our design options group came up with buffer zones for walkability. So buffer zones would be between the traffic and the commercial uses. And in case of bike lanes, we would also separate bike lanes with buffer zones. So buffer zones have landscaped, manicured trees or plotted plants in between the conflicting uses. Our second option for walkability would be pedestrian lighting and signage. Pedestrian lighting is important for ADA disability as well as for children walking to school and for cars and pedestrians to interact. And having these at pedestrian scale is important because currently, all the lighting is there for auto traffic, which disencourages people to walk out during the night because then the lighting is up in the sky and not down on the ground where they're walking. Phase Four is our implementation stage. This is, this was our last stage and compiles all of our analysis from the whole semester. So we separated these into short-term, which is zero to one years, midterm, one to five years, and five-plus term for our long-term. So continuing with the walkability goal. For the short-term, we want to improve the crosswalks. Currently, the Fifth by Northwest Area Planning Commission wants to see brick pavers put into crosswalks because these brick pavers are a different color than the current street as well as the outline, as you can see in the picture. It provides safety during the day and night because car illumination at night will illuminate the crosswalks. So it becomes safer for the pedestrians to cross at all times of the day. For our midterm, we want to improve the sidewalks. Currently, our sidewalks are in disrepair or absent. So we want to widen the sidewalks or implement them where possible as well as include street lamps and buffer zones with our landscaped tree buffer. For our long-term, we want to add public gathering spaces, as you can see from our Roman Plaza. So these public gathering spaces would have movable furniture like that in Bryant Park because people like to have their own personal space. It's an important quality. So if they can move the furniture in this public gathering space, they'll be more likely to use it. We also see potential for food trucks and local food because this is a younger urban professional area. So they want to buy local. So that would go into the public gathering spaces. The Fifth by Northwest Area Commission currently does not have a lot of open space. So this public gathering space would be quite small. But it would become the urban center core that old towns have that this one is currently missing. So we put together a timeline of all the activities. You can't see this very well, but this is in our final report. So we have our activities for walkability. That would be install pedestrian lighting and scale signage. And we have resources as well as actors and the timeframe to go along with them. So possible resources that we included in our report include the capital improvement budget, Columbus Foundation, and the American Community Garden Association. So we realized that this plan is just not as complete as we can be. So we advised the area commission to continue the work and to survey the current residents of the area to improve the overall identity of the area. Thank you very much.
If you have any questions about our presentation, would you like us to field those? We have the whole group from Ohio State here in the first row back there, so... Sure.
Would maybe take an interest, or there might be resources out there that they could access or leverage for their area commissions or their civics? Talk a little bit about how you engage the university in this process.
Well, we're lucky enough that the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission is very close to the Ohio State University. And Professor Nassar, who heads up this group, had done some work for Grand View proper, which is on our boundary. He had done a parking study. We face a challenge there, especially with people that come in from the suburbs that are not used to urban settings, expecting parking to be immediately available in an adjoining location, not walking several blocks to a restaurant. So I found out that he was a resource and I tapped into his expertise and showed the professor and ultimately, his students, our urban commercial overlay that we had put a lot of work into with the Department of Development. Mark Drevillis was very instrumental in looking at our area and surveying the residents five years ago when we formed our area commission. I have since actually passed along his information to the Far East Area Commission and they're going to be utilizing his skills, I understand, next semester for their own plan, similar to ours. And I think it's just a great community resource that could be used throughout the city of Columbus. It's, the way that I saw it correlating was that you have statistically, you know, this is scientific surveys that are cross-referenced and you're getting the real feel for what the residents of Columbus are looking for from their neighborhoods. And as the students mentioned, there's a lot of resources that are out there. I think the Commission on Commissions, that's one of your goals, is to cross-reference and help people tap into those resources. Often, funds go unnoticed. I've had some luck with grant applications. A lot of those projects that I listed, I have funded through grant applications. So there's a great wealth of opportunity and I think that it could definitely be a great partnership, not only for us but for Ohio State.
Great. Thank you. Are there, Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, President Gunther. I just, thanks for coming down for the presentation. And I want to commend Professor Nassar and the class on a very thorough job in getting the analytics available to make this presentation. And if it's okay with the professor and with you, Becky, I'd like to have a copy of the presentation emailed or mailed to the office just for my further consideration and review. Because I know, so maybe you mentioned it was 55-plus pages or 60 pages. So I'd like to take a look at that and maybe share it with all the councilmembers, chambers. It'd be a good start. And thank you, Professor, for taking your resources outside of the university setting and allowing the city of Columbus and neighborhoods to tap into the great resources and the students, the talent that we have at the Ohio State University. Thank you.
Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Gunther. Also, Director Bell, I just wanted to know, I know in our Neighborhoods Institute, it seems like a very interesting venue, an important area of interest and opportunity for, you know, you do such a great job. But I was thinking about Dr. Nassar and this opportunity with our Neighborhood Institute, so...
Thank you. The identity crisis that they were talking about is we're next to Grand View. So a lot of the great things that are going on in our neighborhood, the credit goes to Grand View, unfortunately. So we're trying to create a neighborhood identity with Fifth by Northwest being part of the city of Columbus.
Councilmember Mills?
First, excellent job. Thank you very much. I couldn't quite see in the timeline. Is it list opportunity or estimated or projections on the phases and how the implementation will work? Or is it just listing opportunities? I know you mentioned the grant opportunities. So I know the timeline covered, timeline for the phases or timing of the opportunities such as the capital budget, the timing of that. I couldn't see it on the screen, so my apologies.
Do you have the opportunities matched with the timelines?
Every activity on there applies to one of our eight goals. And across the top, it just goes straight across for resources, actors, and timeline. And then we also have a cost estimation that is not in our timeline. So if we wanted to put in sidewalks would be, or a tree, it'd be cost per tree we would be putting it into. The timelines range from zero to five-plus years, depending on the degree of difficulty. Does that answer your question, or?
Yes, I assume once we get the electronic copy, I assume we'll all receive a copy. Then it can, my eyes are strained and just a touch.
Yes.
I'm getting older. And I had another question about when you first were approached to look at the neighborhood. And I know in terms of overview, you probably were given before starting a project. Were there any sort of indirect lessons that you learned that you didn't anticipate about the neighborhood that you thought was interesting or any that maybe your classmates would like to share?
Well, a couple of our students actually live in this area because it is highly regarded as next to campus. So they moved over to this during their time. And we kind of expected to see the disconnection between Fifth by Northwest and Grand View. Most people don't know that that's the city of Columbus. And we kind of started working on that and developed our timeline according to that. Another problem that the residents have foreseen is the parking issue. And we have found that there is not really a parking issue. It's just there's not good signage for parking. So people don't know where to park. There's commercial corridors. So there's a lot of commercial businesses in one collected area. So parking is spread along that and it's not in one specific area. So we need better signage as one of our goals.
Can I just make a quickie comment? Is that we've done these plans for a lot of different neighborhoods throughout the city. So your first question about if any area commission is interested in having Ohio State work with them, contact me. There's all sorts of people in city and regional planning that will be interested in doing different kinds of studios with area commissions. The other thing is that we've noticed in this area commission, and lots of other ones, that with a small investment on some short-term, low-cost things, and you probably already know this already, you can really get something started that will become a much bigger thing. Like the Short North, which started with some small stuff and grew into a great thing. I think the same thing has the possibility for this area. Just get things, some stuff on the ground to show that there's action going and that'll build on other things. That's, I mean, it's not so much a surprise, but again, we sort of found it for this area.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Gunther. And thank you for the presentation. I just think it's so important to have young people, especially from the Ohio State University, working with our neighborhoods. We're always looking for opportunities to continue to retain young people in our community. And certainly, when they have an opportunity to work on significant projects in our community that are making a difference, certainly, I think it goes a long way to wanting them to stay in our community. So I truly appreciate the collaboration between the Ohio State University and our city. And we have to continue to grow those kinds of relationships with the young people at Ohio State. So thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much for coming down tonight and all your work. And I do want to recognize the students and the university. And Becky, thanks so much for your leadership. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for the opportunity.[1728.91][1728.91](Applause)
We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Gunther. The first ordinance I have is 2468-2012, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase waste identification, cleanup, disposal, and emergency spill response services for the Department of Finance and Management purchasing office with Environmental Enterprises, Inc. to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the Mail Print Services and UTC Fund and to declare an emergency. A contract for waste identification, cleanup, disposal, and emergency spill response services will allow various city agencies to have potentially hazardous materials identified, cleaned up, and disposed from city properties and will allow for the immediate response to hazardous waste materials. to hazardous waste materials. The term of this proposed option contract should be through May 31st of 2013. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2623-2012 to direct and to authorize and direct the City Auditor to provide for the transfer of $4,752,048 within the General Fund, to authorize the transfer of $10,000 within the Land Acquisition Fund, and to authorize an appropriation of $1,187,713 in the Fleet Management Fund, to properly align appropriations with projected expenditures and allow divisions to operate without interruption through the end of 2012 and to declare an emergency. As part of the 2012 third quarter financial review, the Department of Finance and Management identified surpluses and deficits in various objects and several divisions. In order to properly align appropriations with the projected expenditures and allow divisions to operate without interruption through the end of this year, it is necessary to make these transfers. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is, well, there will be a number of ordinances, and this evening we'll be introducing several ordinances which, when enacted, will establish appropriations for the administration's 2013 budget. The proposed General Fund budget for 2013 is $766,000, $766,100,000. Collectively, these ordinances will authorize more than $1 billion in spending to provide services to our residents. These ordinances are the financial outline of the administration's narrative, which is available online at finance.columbus.gov, and was provided to this council on November the 15th of 2012. Over the next few weeks, this council will continue to provide public hearings, which will give residents and this council an opportunity to weigh in on what has been proposed. I'd like to thank Alad Adorian, Director Rakowski, and each of the administrations directors for the briefing, which was provided on the 20th. We've already had one hearing, and Councilwoman Zach Klein had his hearing last Thursday. And the other council members will probably be announcing their hearings during this time, during this hearing. And they will start, I have a hearing tomorrow on Health and Human Services and Finance, and then the rest of the councilmen's will be having them through December 13th. And then on Tuesday, December the 18th, we'll have public comment on the entirety of the budget. I will now read the titles of proposed ordinances and to the record pursuant to the city charter. The first ordinance is ordinance 2630-2012 to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31st, 2013, for each of the several object Level Ones for which the city of Columbus has to provide from the money known to be in the treasury of the said city of Columbus and the fund known as the General Fund during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from all, from other sources of revenue, the amount of $766,100,000 and to declare an emergency. I request to table indefinitely.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2631-2012. This ordinance makes appropriations and transfers for 12 months ending December 31st of 2013 for other funds or for various divisions to authorize the City Auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I request to table indefinitely.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2634-2013 is to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31st, 2013, for the sinking fund, bond, note, retirement funds, and to declare an emergency. Again, I request to table indefinitely.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Have to go back to another one. It's ordinance 2633-2012 to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31st, 2013, for selected other funds for various divisions to authorize the City Auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. And again, I request to table indefinitely.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you, ordinance number 2341-2012 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept $32,000, $32,000 grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Ohio Buckles Buckeyes Program, to authorize the appropriation of $32,000 for the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. This particular ordinance is for, will provide low-income families access to child safety seats and training in nine counties. And those counties are Delaware, Fairfield, Franklin, Hocking, Licken, Morgan, Muskingham, Perry, Pickaway, and Ross. And in each county, the staff of the Columbus Public Health will train individuals to be able to go back to their communities and be able to share with them how to place their child properly into the child safety seat. And then after the training, they will receive child safety seats for the children. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. A few announcements on tomorrow, on December the 4th at 5:00 p.m. Again, I will host a public hearing on Finance, Health, and Human Services. And the purpose of this hearing is for the directors to share in more detail their budget requests, and also, public testimony will be accepted. And anyone wishing to address the council on this matter must fill out a speaker slip tomorrow from 8:00 a.m. until the time of the hearing. Also, Columbus Neighbor Health Center's East Central Dental Clinic is now offering pediatric dental care on Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And new patients must come into the clinic and fill out paperwork prior to scheduling. You must also bring your proof of income or insurance card and a photo ID for an appointment. Please call (645) 5541. Okay, thank you. One second, I'll go back to that. Okay. The clinic accepts Medicaid, CareSource, Molina, and most private insurance plans. Also offers a sliding fee scale based on household income to Franklin County residents who do not have insurance. And the minimum fee for patients on the sliding fee scale is $40 per visit. Also, Impact Community Action and The Heritage are joining forces to host Super Saturday events to help Franklin County families immune to stay warm this winter. Super Saturday will provide access to Home Energy Assistance Program, Winter Crisis Program, which helps families in Columbus and Franklin County who are at or below 200% of the federal poverty guideline with a one-time payment of $175 toward their utility bill. The payment will be made if the service is in threat of disconnection, the service is off, or the service is being transferred. Impact's event will be held Saturday, December the 8th at 700 Bryden Road from 9:00 to 3:00. And The Heritage will hold their event on Saturday, December 15th at 2424 Gatewood Road from 10:00 to 3:00. Up to 65 walk-in customers will be served in each event on a first-come, first-served basis. You must be valid government ID, social security cards for people in the household, proof of income for the past 90 days, a current gas or electric bills, and a copy of the lease if the service has been disconnected. And I now, those are all my announcements, but I need to go back to Health and Human Services and read a piece of legislation. And it is to author ordinance number 2461-2012 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Franklin County Children's Services for the provision of public health nursing services in the amount not to exceed $204,100,000, to authorize the appropriation of $204,100,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. In this contract, the public health nurses from Public Health do health assessments of children and make home visits with intake staff, provide nursing consultation and training. They interpret medical reports and help develop treatment plans for families referred to by FCC. And this contract is from January 1st of 2013 until December 31st of 2013. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
2561-2012 has been moved and seconded. Call the board?
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Pass. There's nothing else before, from Health and Human Services, I'd like to move on to the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 2038-2012 to amend the management compensation plan. Ordinance number 1150-2007 has amended by amending Section 3, the definition of family, by amending Section 15A to an Act Section 5E-E175, to amend certain sections of Section 5F and to increase pay raises, increase pay rates which are below the new state minimum wage, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Ordinance 2539-2012 to accept memorandum of understanding number 2012-02 executed between representatives of the city of Columbus and Columbus Municipal Association of Government Employees, or CMAG, CWA Local 4502, which amends the collective bargaining contract April the 24th, 2011 through April the 23rd, 2014, and to declare an emergency. The collective bargaining contract with the city of Columbus and the Columbus Municipal Association of Government Employees, CMAG, CWA Local 4502, requires that any modification to the contract be agreed between the parties. Memorandum of understanding number 2012-02 has been executed by the parties to amend Appendix B classification listing by citing a pay grade to the classification of therapeutic recreation manager, to change the classification of electricity distribution manager to power distribution manager, to change the classification of help desk representative to technology service desk representative, and abolish certain classifications as approved by the Civil Service Commission. Any costs associated with adjustments in pay will be absorbed by the respective departments. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And then finally, 2566-2012 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a contract with Grandus, Grandescus, Inc., formerly Daystar Computer Systems, Inc., for the support and maintenance of Legistar, the city's electronic system for creating and submitting legislation in accordance with the sole source provisions of Section 329.07 of the Columbus City Code 1959, to authorize the expenditure of $33,401 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes city clerk to enter into a contract with Grandescus, Inc., formerly Daystar Computer Systems, Inc., for the continued support and maintenance of Legistar, the city's electronic system for creating and submitting legislation. The system is now accessible from anywhere on the Internet, enhancing the city council's efforts for transparency and efficiency in government. The funding for this contract is fully budgeted within the 2012 operating budget. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That is all that I have.
Next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in Development, 2474-2012 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Total Quality Logistics, LLC, equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of five years, in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $125,000, the creation of 40 new full-time positions, and the retention of 40 full-time jobs. I'd just like to recognize the work that the Department of Development has done. You may have seen the paper this week of IBM coming to Columbus and the 500 jobs that it's bringing. This is just another example with Total Quality Logistics in there, 80 jobs, the 40 creating new, the 40 retained. So that's essentially 600 jobs just this week that the Department of Development has brought and retained and saved in the city of Columbus. I'd like to recognize Boy Safford and his department for the work, Bill Webster and the work that's been done. It's a great week for the city of Columbus and the jobs that are being created. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
2489-2012 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to cancel $210,008 from an auditor certificate, to authorize the transfer of $210,008 within the General Government Grant Fund, to authorize the appropriation of $540,000 from the General Government Grant Fund, Neighborhood Stabilization Program One Grant, to the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to provide loans and grants to eligible projects and activities associated with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to authorize the expenditure of $794,310.13 from the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. Director Safford, you or someone from your staff, give some insight on this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginter, and other members of council. I will ask Rita Perez, our Housing Administrator, to come up here and hopefully briefly share with folks what we're doing with the reallocation of the money.
Thank you, Director Safford. Ms. Perez?
Good evening, Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council. We are asking for your support this evening for ordinance 2489-2012, which does three things. Number one, it subtracts $210,000 from the NSP 1 payroll. When NSP 1 payroll was initially established, we didn't know there was going to be NSP 2 and 3, and so we have worked smarter and harder and been able to do more with less. So we are able to free up some of this payroll for projects. In addition, we are allocating up to $540,000 of program income. Right now, we don't have any of that program income, but we do expect it to come in, hopefully relatively soon. And there is $44,310 of canceled funds that we are asking for authorization to expend. All of these funds will be used to do housing projects within our city.
When you mentioned the $544,000 that's yet to come in, by come in, do you mean by the success of the projects that have already been built and money coming back in the city for the sale or the use of those projects?
Chairman Klein, President Ginter, member of council, that is correct. We have a good track record of sales. Most of the sales proceeds on those homes are in escrow as we sort out who gets what, frankly, trying to figure out what investments our developers have made that are priority investments to be returned to them versus the money that's coming back to the city. As each one of those is settled up, then the money is wired out of escrow, the developers pushing back to them, and the city's pushing back to us. And then, obviously, we are looking for the authorization to reinvest that.
Reinvest the money that's coming in, so it's circuitous to the project in the NSP-defined area?
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Mills?
Can you expand on the meaning of canceled obligations?
There are a variety of things that happen that result in canceled obligations. We had to set a budget up in 2008, so things like loan servicing that may or may not have happened, things like supplies that we didn't end up purchasing, land bank purchases. When you set the money up for a land bank purchase, you always set it up for the worst-case scenario, and so you go to closing, and oftentimes you will have funds canceled from that encumbrance because they weren't needed to accomplish the closing. So it's really a wide variety of things.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Perez. Appreciate it. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
2546-2012 to approve the Second Amendment to petition for organization of a new community authority, for one neighborhood new community authority, and make related findings and to declare an emergency. This is a continuing piece of legislation per the Ohio Revise- This is a continuing piece of legislation per the Ohio Revise Code and other associated laws, and amending the petition for organization of the new community authority for one neighborhood new community authority. So in that protocol, and then following that line of legal requirements, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-six oh nine, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary for conveyance of title in order to acquire properties within the East Franklinton area, to amend the two thousand and twelve capital improvements budget to appropriate four hundred thousand dollars from the North Fund and Other Acquisition Fund, transfer cash between projects from the same fund, to authorize the expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars from the North Fund and Other Acquisition Fund, and to declare an emergency. This appropriation is part of the East Franklinton Development. That is part of the mayor's initiative in the East Franklinton area for the redevelopment of East Franklinton, and these monies will be used to acquire property, as the legislation says. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-six thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the appropriation of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize the transfer of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the general fund, authorize the appropriation of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund to the Department of Development, to authorize the expenditure of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and one hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund, to support the continuation of the Graffiti Abatement Assistance Program, and to declare an emergency. As you may recall, in two thousand and twelve this year, Councilmember Mills and I held a series of public meetings that led to the creation of the Graffiti Abatement Assistance Program in response to a community outcry about graffiti vandalism plaguing neighborhoods in the City of Columbus. This council voted unanimously to support the Graffiti Abatement Assistance Program, which allows city resources to be used to clean up graffiti in neighborhoods, understanding that some people are physically and financially unable to clean up graffiti. These people are victims of crimes, and so balancing that with the need to have strong and safe neighborhoods, which is the focus of this council and a priority of this council, the Graffiti Abatement Assistance Program was created. We've had over four, or up to four hundred complaints this year. Half of those have been evaded already. The other half have been working its way through the system. We've learned a lot about the Graffiti Abatement Program and its efficiencies, and I think next year, as the program progresses, we'll identify and be able to rectify and remedy those efficiencies or problems, to make the efficiencies better, to make the program more effective, to realize the goal of a stronger and safer Columbus. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
May I move to Recreation and Parks, President Ginter? Twenty-five oh four, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to modify and extend contract number EL zero one two eight five seven with the Columbus Urban League for professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program two thousand and twelve contract, and to declare an emergency. Dr. McKnight, provide some insight.
President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, as you're aware, we've got a contract with the Urban League to provide the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program as part of the APS program. The contract was established based on estimates for labor costs and material supplies to run the program. Two things. One, the original contract ends the end of this year, and as you know, the budget won't pass till February. So this extends the contract till February eighth, so once that passes, we'll have a new contract we'll bring to council for two thousand and thirteen. We also found that, one, we had a vacancy, someone resigned a vacancy for a while, and we also got some staff on a little bit later, so we've actually saved some money on the contract, so this reduces the amount to recognize those changes.
And I'd like to recognize that our hearing that we recently had, you had some good insight on the effectiveness of the APS program, and that I'm encouraged of the work that's being done in the community and coordination with the Urban League, is we'll be able to realize some real successes in giving opportunities for youth and at-risk youth the opportunities to have a place to go and to work with the Urban League and some of the APS program folks to take advantage of the terrific programming that we have in our rec centers. So I appreciate the work that you and the Urban League do in realizing and making this program a success.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-five fifteen, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the appropriation of fifty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents from the unappropriated balance of the Recreation and Parks Private Leisure Assistance for Youth Fund, which is the PLAY Fund, to the Recreation and Parks Department for scholarships for economically disadvantaged youth, to authorize the transfer of five hundred dollars from the Recreation and Parks PLAY Fund two thirty-three, and to declare an emergency. I wanted to highlight this particular piece of legislation. It's not a new piece of legislation. It comes up every year, if not a couple times a year, but I wanted to highlight the PLAY scholarships that are available for students and for kids, not just students, for kids in the City of Columbus who attend some of the fee-based programs that we have in the City of Columbus. We have some terrific programs. Some of them, during the summer especially, do have fees associated with them, and because of the philanthropic giving that is associated with this PLAY scholarship and the City of Columbus's commitment to make sure that those that are economically disadvantaged can still take advantage of these fee-based programs, the PLAY scholarships available. So if you're listening, or if you know someone, if you're listening, that needs perhaps a little extra financial help to take advantage of one of the terrific, one of the many programs that we have available, this scholarship's available. Take advantage of it. That's why the money's there, so that no kid can be left out of an opportunity to take advantage of some of the terrific programming we have in our Recreation and Parks system. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-five ninety-seven, two thousand and twelve, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Diamond X Engineering LTD for professional services related to the HVAC improvements two thousand and thirteen design project, authorize the expenditure of three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars and a contingency of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This goes to our continued improvements of our rec centers, our HVAC improvements. Many of our rec centers, as people know, you go in, the nineteen seventy or earlier architecture did not provide with great airflow and air quality, and can get really hot in the summers. So with the great program I just talked about, if you're a senior perhaps trying to take advantage of it, and it's really hot in there, or a young kid trying to take advantage of it, and it's really hot in there, it takes away from all the great things that we do. So this is part of our continual improvement of making our rec centers state-of-the-art. And this particular piece will affect Thompson Rec Center, Tuttle Rec Center, as well as Gillie Senior Center, which is a great resource for seniors. I've had the pleasure of going up there and playing bingo and doing some other things. It's just a really great resource for seniors. So I urge every one of my colleagues to pass this piece of legislation so we continue the good work that our Recreation and Parks Department has. I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Osteen.
P. Lee?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
That's all I have in Recreation and Parks.
Are you a decent bingo player?
B twenty-two. It's about having a consistency between the letter and the number, just having a straight flow, so no one gets confused.
He wants to be the caller. Thanks for your indulgence. President Proten Miller, our next committee is the Technology Committee. President Proten Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. And tonight in the Technology Committee, we have a couple items. The first one is twenty-three thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to modify an agreement with Michael Rando's to provide professional services in support of Columbus Television, CTV renovation projects, to extend the agreement for a one-year term to provide final drawings and client representation and advocacy services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars from the Department of Technology Information Services Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance actually authorized the Department of Technology to complete the design work of the studio control room for CTV, and also work related to connections from the control room to council chambers, offices, and conference rooms within City Hall. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-three sixty-two, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew and modify an agreement with Ornet OSU for annual maintenance and support services, and the purchase of additional VMware licenses, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Service Fund, and to declare an emergency. The VMware software helped reduce costs of data systems, and it also reduces the power consumption of the PCs and servers for the City of Columbus. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-four fifty-six, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to modify an agreement with Secure Works Incorporated for additional managed technology security services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of fifty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-six thousand seventy-six cents from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Service Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Secure Works Incorporated services helps the City of Columbus to comply with federal and state requirements related to IRS tax information, credit card processing, and also HIPAA compliance. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Twenty-four fifty-seven, two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into an agreement with IBM Corporation for Rational Software Training Services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. With a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Osteen.
P. Lee?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
And last in Technology Committee, we have twenty-four sixty-three, two thousand and twelve, to appropriate one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents within the Special Income Tax Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to renew and modify a contract purchase order for the second term of a three-year agreement for Microsoft Enterprise Software Licensing from Software House International Corporation, from a state-term schedule, and to authorize the expenditure of one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, or so much thereof as may be necessary from the Special Income Tax Fund, for the Department of Technology and to declare an emergency. And this appropriation is for Microsoft Office, for over, close to over four thousand licenses for Microsoft Office for the City of Columbus. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
That is all we have in Technology Committee. I do have one announcement. As Councilmember Tyson mentioned, there are budget hearings set, and for the Technology Committee and also the Small and Minority Business Development Committee, we will be having our two thousand and thirteen budget hearing on Thursday, December thirteenth, at five thirty PM here in council chambers. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, President Proten Miller. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary are the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance twenty-four twenty-one dash two thousand and twelve, to authorize the appropriation of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents within a Public Safety Initiative Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to issue purchase orders for various miscellaneous items on behalf of the Division of Support Services for the initiation of a pilot fuel quality testing program, to authorize the expenditure of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents from the Public Safety Initiative Fund, and to declare an emergency. In Columbus, we are about to begin a pilot fuel testing program that will ensure that consumers are getting what they pay for at the pump. This is an initiative that relates directly to consumer safety. Items that will be purchased through this ordinance would include water detector equipment, measuring sticks, analyzers, and other supplies, and we've been working on this pilot program since May two thousand and eleven, and we are excited to kick it off. Ohio is currently one of the remaining four states that does not have a law requiring statewide fuel quality testing. Although the City of Columbus may test for the fuel quality, it does not have any regulatory authority to hold stations accountable when lower-than-posted octane fuel is found. Currently, the Division of Public Safety's weights and measures are responsible for testing more than six thousand gas pumps at two hundred and eighty Columbus stations for fuel quantity. The pilot program report will include a summary of our pilot findings, not including names of businesses, and will be only used to assess our next steps. I would like Deputy Director George Speaks to add some comments related to this ordinance. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. President Ginter and councilmembers, we simply want to ensure that consumers get what they pay for. The Division of Weights and Measures is very excited to begin this program, and we will report back to council our findings after this due diligence pilot program, and we look forward to sharing the results with you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-four eighty dash two thousand and twelve, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with the Association of Psychotherapy, Inc., for the Division of Police, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Division of Police's general fund budget, to authorize the expenditure of thirty thousand dollars from the general fund, to waive the provisions of competitive bidding, and to declare an emergency. This authorizes the Public Safety Director into a contract with the Association of Psychotherapy. Currently, the Division of Police utilizes the services of the Association for Critical Incident Care. This is in response to results of shootings or any death, the applied behavior of science in terms of classroom instruction, dealing with the unique and stressful situations in police officers' daily duties and sworn counseling. Police officers involved in shootings are required to attend sessions with psychologies, and the funding for the Association for Psychotherapy covers this cost. This ordinance will establish a contract through February twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, P. Lee Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-five zero five dash two thousand and twelve, to authorize the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with MED three thousand, Inc., for EMS billing, collection, and reporting services for the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to authorize the expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to declare an emergency. I want to make sure that I provide a little bit more context to this ordinance as a result. This current contract that we have with MED three thousand has generated quite a bit of savings. First, allow Deputy Director Speaks to add comments related to this ordinance.
Thank you. Last year, our Division of Fire responded to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-two emergency medical runs. Data is gathered from each of these emergency runs and is reviewed for two purposes: patient quality care improvement, and secondly, billing. Our vendor over the last five years, MED three thousand, has simply done an outstanding job in helping us to fulfill both purposes. MED three thousand provides one hundred and four Panasonic Toughbook computers, specialized software, and years of computer integration with multiple computer systems, training to all of our firefighters as to how to best input the data and billing services. With respect to patient quality review, MED three thousand has worked with Dr. Kessick, and we have multiple custom reports that are being utilized daily with an eye on continuous improvement of the care that we give. With respect to billing, the revenues derived from EMS billing help to partially offset the cost of performing one hundred and thirty-seven thousand emergency runs. The contract that we have with MED three thousand is looked at as a national model. It is performance-based. There are incentives if they meet certain marks, and likewise, there are penalties if they fail to perform. I'm happy to report that the company has performed in exceptional manner over the last five years. In short- In short, our efficiencies have greatly increased while the compensation paid to this vendor, MED3000, has decreased over those years. And for these many reasons, Department of Public Safety wholeheartedly recommends approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Currently, we seek to waive formal competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, enter into a contract MED3000, in order to continue the EMS services for the citizens of Columbus with the hope pending all of passage for a contract through 2018. By waiving competitive bidding, this will ensure that the city can continue garnering uninterrupted revenues and for go retraining of any firefighters on new computer hardware and/or software, and any repeat resources used for the installation of docking stations, continuing customized patient quality review, and reap better savings by negotiating to pay the vendor less of a percentage of revenues received. Basically, in summary, our EMS revenues have nearly doubled under MED3000, and at the same time, the expenses and compensation, MED3000 will decrease nearly a third, from 15% to 10.5%, over the course of the next two contracts. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-six eleven dash twenty-twelve, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit of Brenda Williams versus the city of Columbus pending in United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio Eastern Division, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask City Attorney Rick Pfeifer to provide information related to this ordinance. City Attorney?
Chairman Mills, President Ginter, members of council. This case fundamentally for the city was a question of whether or not a Franklin County Municipal Court employee is also a Columbus city employee. This case began when an individual who works as an interpreter in the Franklin County Municipal Court alleged that she was subjected to a hostile work environment created by a judge. She retained counsel. That counsel then threatened lawsuit against that judge and against three administrative judges, as well as the court administrator. The judge and the other, and the administrative judges were represented by the insurance policy paid for by the Ohio Supreme Court. In the course of discussions with the lawyer that represented that insurance company, which was not us, it was a lawyer out of Cincinnati, both the judge and the administrative presiding judges settled, as did the court administrator. Subsequently, the plaintiff Brenda Williams then filed a lawsuit against the city of Columbus in federal court alleging that not only was she a court employee, but she was also a city employee, and that if, in fact, the allegations were proved, that she was subject to a hostile work environment, the city of Columbus was also liable for that. Upon the filing of the motion, we filed what we call a 12B6, asking it to be dismissed because we said it's plainly, it's plain that she is not a city employee. The judge in this case denied that motion. Discovery then was undertaken, and as a result of the discovery, we then filed a motion for summary judgment based upon the evidence provided, believing again that she was not a city employee. The judge denied that motion. So we're headed down a path where we are believing strongly that we do not have a situation where a municipal court employee is also a city employee. The judge in this case then scheduled mediation, and during the course of that mediation, it was decided that this case should be settled, and the amount is $150,000, and we're asking council to approve this. The settlement was discussed with the Department of Finance and Management, also with the mayor's office, who recommend that this be approved. Please understand that there were allegations made, but there were no facts to prove in a court of law that those ever took place. There were allegations made that this employee was a dual employee, both of the Franklin County Municipal Court and the city. There were no facts to prove that that was true. We believe that looking upon the framework of the relationship that the Franklin County Municipal Court has for the city of Columbus, there was some vulnerability as to whether or not she was also a city employee. So at court, you'd have to first decide whether the allegation of a hostile work environment was true, and if the jury found that so, the jury would then move to say, well, the city of Columbus has some responsibility and should therefore pay something. We are now, have been in discussions with both the court, with the Department of Finance and Management, and with our Labor Chief Pam Gordon on looking at the established relationship that we have with the court to make it clear that the city of Columbus has no control over the hiring nor of that workplace. We do not hire judges. The judges are elected by the people. The city does not hire the employees, the municipal court. In fact, the municipal court in its hirement does not use our Civil Service Commission. So we are now looking at the situation so that if this should arise in the future, we believe the city will be better positioned to defend in such a situation, and we ask that this ordinance be adopted, be passed.
Thank you, City Attorney Pfeifer. I want to again reiterate the city's vigorous attempts to contest that Brenda Williams is not employed at the city of Columbus and that we've already began the recognition of discussions of how to go forward with that distinction. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Chair. One question, and it involves around your opinion, City Attorney, on whether the city of Columbus by itself is the only municipality possibly liable in this situation, considering that the municipal court covers other municipalities and townships within Franklin County.
Chairman Mills, President Ginter, councilmember Klein, and members of council. When you examine, when you sit down with our city auditor, Mr. Doran, and you ask the question, how do we fund and who pays for the municipal court's functions? You will find that while other jurisdictions, townships, and the other municipalities do use the court, their contribution for payment of that court's operation amounts to slightly less than $200,000. And our city's contributions, it gets you into the...
Net costs of the municipal court, the municipal court's office, the 200,000, net that we need to spend on behalf of the city, less the fines and mortgages that we collect, net costs, not the money of...
So with assistance from our esteemed city auditor, the number is excess of $11 million that the city's kicking in to run the operation down at 375 South High Street.
So essentially, the, any potential legal liability that could be shared by other municipalities and townships based on the $200,000 investment to the $11.5 million investment, you're basically determining to be negligible?
Counselmember Klein, that is correct. It's minimal. And I think it's also important to note out, and this is where we had some difficulty with the facts as it stated, because in some instances, it is conceivable, based on looking at the paperwork that relates the city to the municipal court, it is conceivable that a court employee could consider him or herself also employed by the city. Now, you have to understand that when the paychecks, the city of Columbus is basically the fiscal agent for the Franklin County Municipal Court and the Franklin County Clerk of Courts. And that's what we do. And as a result, when paychecks are issued to those employees, it says city of Columbus. And when information is sent to Ohio Public Employment, OPRS, OPRS, it says city of Columbus employee. And we send the IRS, the W2, say city of Columbus employee. So someone looking at it says, well, she may be, he or she may work for the municipal court, but look, the city of Columbus employs it because you say the paycheck's the city of Columbus. So we're having discussions about how to deal with that appearance of dual employment status.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. That was my question, is based upon the relationship as it is today, in your best opinion, do you think there is even an opportunity to separate the municipal employees from the city employees?
Well, we believe that the municipal employee, that the municipal court employees are separate from city employees. Now, the question it becomes, how can you arrange the fiscal agent responsibility so that it's clear that there's nothing come from the city? Actually, you cannot. Even though we are in the process of structuring the fact pattern to make it clear, we could always be sued. But I think what we faced in this case was form, not substance, but the form was killing us, and that led us to realize we ought to be settled in this case.
Thank you.
Again, want to reiterate that the conversations are ongoing, and the city attorney and myself have looked at this a couple different ways and not seen the complete responsibility that city attorney, again, with the city of Columbus, again, contesting the employment of Brenda Williams. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all I have. By way of legislation, I have just one announcement. I would like to ensure that everyone is aware that on December 12th, we'll have a public safety hearing beginning at 4 o'clock on Wednesday, December 12th. I also want to take this time to say thank you and recognize this council, as well as Annie Murray, the Director of Domestic Violence and Stalking Unit for the city attorney's office. The domestic violence unit has four specially-trained prosecutors there assigned to handle only domestic violence cases, and these specialized prosecutors handle cases that include, but certainly not limited to, repeat assaults, egregious acts of violence, and victims that are high-risk, including elderly children and a disabled. And tonight, we pass two grants from the Crime Victims Section of the Ohio Attorney General's Office that will certainly assist in the work of this unit. So I want to thank for the support because it truly makes a difference in working in tandem with a variety of community liaisons to provide a variety of service to domestic violence victims. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Peely chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. In Public Service and Transportation this evening, we have ordinance 2493, 2012, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Decker Construction Company to provide for the payment of the contract and construction administration and inspection services in connection with the intersection improvements, ACHIR, at Holt, Livingston, at Lockhorn, Hudson, at McGuffey Project, and to authorize the transfer of funds within and from the Street Highway Geo Bonds Fund into the Local Transportation Improvement Fund to authorize appropriation and expenditure of $2,099,305.15 from the Local Transportation Improvement Fund for the Department of Public Service, and to authorize the expenditure of $52,328.81 from the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund for the Department of Public Utilities and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents intersection improvements, ACHIR, at Holt, Livingston, at Lockhorn, and Hudson, at McGuffey Project. The purpose of this project is to reconstruct these intersections to improve the operation and safety of each intersection. The legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with Decker Construction Company to provide for the payment of the contract and construction administration and inspection services in connection with the intersection improvement projects. Again, this is a joint project with the Department of Public Utilities. He will provide a portion of the funding for the water improvements included in this project. Work on these intersections consists of the construction of new curbs, curb ramps, resurfacing sidewalks, sewer, water lines, and signal modifications. This is another perfect example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies in order to be efficient and effective. I urge your support on this ordinance. If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have in Public Service this evening. However, I do have one comment about Public Service. Winter is almost upon us, and, but the city of Columbus snow warriors are ready for whatever old man winter decides to throw at us. Last Monday, the Department of Public Service Director, Kelsey, and I conducted the annual inspection of the snow warriors and the snow warrior fleet. The snow warrior fleet totals 137 trucks. That includes 66 dump trucks and 29 one-ton pickup trucks that will be on the front lines fighting snow and ice. As of today, the city has 27,000 tons of salt in the salt barns ready to go. Columbus is part of the Ohio Department of Transportation-led consortium of cities and counties statewide, and thanks to that unified effort, Columbus is paying less than $51 a ton for road salt. That's a big savings compared to the more than $63 a ton that we paid for salt during the winter of 2009 and 2010 before Columbus became a member of the ODOT Consortium. But our most valuable assets are our employees who put in the long hours behind the wheels of the trucks as our snow warriors. The core group of snow warriors include 111 employees in the Department of Public Service, but we have 90 additional city employees mostly in the Department of Public Utilities and Recreation and Parks, cross-trained to serve as snow warriors during and after heavy snowstorms. They certainly have a big job in the city of Columbus, and they're responsible for maintaining more than 6,300 land miles, which is more land miles than the cities of Cleveland and Cincinnati combined. But they have a big advantage, and that is the Columbus Snow Plan. The Snow Plan is a well-fought-out, efficient plan for plowing and treating streets, and is one of the best snow fighting strategies in the nation. Under the plan, the first streets to be plowed and treated are arterial streets and the highest traffic volumes and higher speed limits. Then we go down to the collector streets, and then the residential streets, which have wider traffic volumes and lower speed limits. And under the Columbus Snow Plan, residential streets are plowed only after snow falls up four inches or more. I would like to thank everyone of our snow warriors. They are on the job when the snow falls, whether it be in the middle of the night, the weekends, or holidays, and if there is snow, they are on the job. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Coleman and Director Kelsey for their leadership and their work with city council that has given Columbus one of the best snow fighting teams and snow fighting plans in the nation. Thank you, snow warriors. With that said, I have Public Utilities, if you'd like me to go forward. In Public Utilities this evening, we have ordinance 2467, 2012, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with Arcadius U.S. Incorporated in connection with the Sewer System Capacity Model Update 2012, and to authorize the transfer of $326,563 in a total expenditure of up to $4,326,563 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund and to the Division of Sewage and Drainage and to authorize an amendment to the 2012 capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have. Under Public Utilities, may I move on to rules and reference? Under Rules and Reference, we have ordinance 2398, 2012, to amend chapters 221, 1101, 1103, 1105, 1107, 1109, 1113, 1115, 1147, 1153, 1160, 1161, 1162, 1163, 1165, and 1167 of the Columbus City Code 1959 to reflect the separation of the Division of Power from the Division of Power and Water within the Department of Public Utilities and to repeal the existing versions of the chapters being amended herein. Back in 2006, the Division of Electricity was merged with the Division of Water, creating the Division of Power and Water. That division was led by a single administrator while remaining a separate utility within the Department of Public Utilities. What this ordinance will do is separate the Division of Power and Water into two separate divisions and will create the position of the Division of Power Administrator within the Department of Public Utilities. This will allow the new administrator to maximize leadership and focus on the core functions of electricity. The division will retain its own accounts, budget, and personnel. The division has weathered personnel cuts, deferred maintenance, and delayed streetlighting projects over the last few years. However, during this past year, the Department of Public Utilities has been able to save the division millions of dollars through 2018 through negotiations of the division's purchase power. With the turnaround in financials for power and hiring an administrator to maximize leadership, it is time to separate the divisions so that they can focus on their core functions. This will now make water and power separate utilities with separate enterprise funds. This fiscal impact is limited to the creation of the power administrator who will lead the new division. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginter.
And last but surely not least, I will be holding a public service hearing to review...
And last, but surely not least, I will be holding a public service hearing to review the proposed 2013 budget on Wednesday, December 5th, in city council chambers from 5 until 6 p.m. This meeting will be broadcast live on CTV Columbus Cable Channel 3. Those wishing to address city council regarding this issue can fill out a speaker slip at City Hall between 8 and 5:30 p.m. on December 5th. Thank you. Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Pele. We do have several non-agenda speakers. We'll take those after we go to regular meeting number 62 for zoning. So as far as our regular agenda, nothing else has come before council. Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Ginther. I just have, for the benefit of the, and to further inform our listening to the audience, we have the Administration Budget Hearing on Tuesday, December 11th, to commence at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Nothing else has come before council. I had to entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 61.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers after zoning. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Sir's second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the zoning committee, we have four items. The first one is 2412-2012, which I would first like to take it from the table.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
2412-2012, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035-R3 Residential District and 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 2621 to 23 North Fort Street to permit a two-dwelling with reduced parking in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Andrea Ashley. Proposed use is to conform an existing two-unit dwelling with reduced parking in the R3 residential district. It received the University Area Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
2529-2012, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.035-AR4 Apartment Residential District Use, 3333.22 Maximum Side Yard Requirement, 3333.23 Minimum Side Yard Per Minute, 3333.24 Rear Yard, and 3372.563 Maximum Lot Coverage of the Columbus City Coase for the property located at 106 East 11th Avenue to permit two, three-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the AR4 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Barrett Jardine. Proposed use is two, three-unit dwellings on one lot. It received the University Area Commission recommendation for approval, and also the University Area Review Board recommendation for approval, along with the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
2549-2012, to rezone 68 LaZelle Road, being 11.2 plus or minus acres located on the north side of LaZelle Road, 780 plus or minus feet east of North High Street, and on the east side of North High Street, 995 plus or minus feet north of LaZelle Road, from R Rule District to LC4 Limited Commercial and LARLD Limited Apartment Residential Districts. The applicant is Metro Development LLC. Proposed use is limited commercial and multi-unit residential development. It received a Development Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. I have no speaker slips. I would like to first to amend as submitted.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And last, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And last is 2550-2012, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.27 Parking Setback Lines, and 3333.255 Perimeter Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 68 LaZelle Road to permit a reduced parking setback line and perimeter yard for an apartment complex in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC. Proposed use is reduced parking setback line and perimeter yard for an apartment complex. It received the City Department recommendation for approval. And I would like to first to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning committee tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. There's nothing else has come before the zoning committee this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Melon Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily.